If we could, go ahead and call our meeting to order, please. If I could ask everyone to stand for a moment of silence, then we'll ask Mr. Thompson to leave him the plates and flag.
Shall we pledge? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Shall we call a roll?
Mrs. Singer-Erdley?
Here.
Mr. Lesby?
Here.
Mrs. Lesby Mitchell?
Here.
Mrs. Tinglestein?
Here.
Mr. Showalter?
Here.
Mr. Stone? Mr. Mrs. Tackett?
Here.
Mr. Thompson?
Here.
Thank you. We have a call. Mr. Stone is working tonight. Tonight is the event that you've probably seen on Facebook or the media, the Poor Man's March.
Uh huh.
And there's a program at Georgetown College Council and our group was invited, but I let them know I was in direct conflict with the council meeting. And we probably weren't in a position to change the council meeting to attend. But Todd is head of security, so he's over there working tonight. Each of you should have a copy of the minutes of our last regularly scheduled meeting, October the 24th, if you'd like to look those over for any possible corrections or additions.
Motion made.
I'll second.
Motion's made to approve, seconded. If there are no questions, all in favor say aye. Opposed? Thank you. Each of you should have in your packet also received a copy of the latest check register. If you can indicate if you received that check register. Thank you. Okay, that gets us into public comments. And let's see, first on the list of public comments is Michael Dahl.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, council members. You know, thank you for allowing me to be here again this evening. You know, I do have something here with me and that is just a copy of the fairness ordinance that this council passed last month, you know, on a vote of five to three. So, you know, I just want to thank you, all of you who voted for it again. This really was a momentous step for this city in advancing civil rights, in advancing human equality in this city. So I want to thank you again for that. And then again, last weekend, or the previous weekend, sorry, we held a pride picnic in celebration of passing ordinance. So I just want to thank you again on behalf of Georgetown Fairness, for those of you who could be here for joining us for that. I think we had about 150 people there or so. So, you know, it was just a really great time to celebrate our hard work, you know, what you guys have done to, just to help advance quality here in Georgetown. However, you know, my message is twofold tonight because to me, human rights is no joke. And I stand here on behalf of Georgetown Fairness and myself to condemn the actions of two council members, Ms. Singer-Erdley and Mr. Thompson, for their actions on September the 9th, you know, regarding which I'm sure you've all seen several times. I know we wish this could all go away. I, you know, I really do. But like I said, human rights are no joke and that's why I'm here. Because, you know, justice never sleeps and it doesn't stop for anybody. So with that, you know, unfortunately, I have to stand here to condemn those actions of Ms. Erdley and Mr. Thompson for laughing about human rights. To me, that has no place whatsoever on this council. That's something that's just common sense that should just not be allowed. So I'm here to express those concerns and, you know, my personal opinion on that. But also, you know, Ms. Erdley wrote an article in this Saturday's paper, which, a letter, mind you, which I'm sure all of you have seen by now. I don't have to repeat it word for word. But in that she called this ordinance and our work unnecessary. I stand here before you to say that it was absolutely necessary. Because 50 years ago, I would have been arrested. 20 years ago, I would have been shot. 10 years ago, I couldn't have married at all. And then, you know, up until a few months ago, I couldn't have maybe possibly bought a house here or gotten a job. So in my mind, you know, our work, our past five years of work, and the past 50 years of work have been absolutely necessary to me. So forgive me, if you may, for being a little passionate about this issue. But it's something that is obviously very close to my heart and to thousands of other Kentuckians that live in this city and around Kentucky. Which is why I propose that, you know, this is an idea I have been working with personally for some time, since ordinance was passed, to work with the mayor and with this council to pass a proclamation to make September the 9th annually of each year, Fairness Day in Georgetown. I will do whatever work is necessary, Georgetown Fairness will do whatever work is necessary to make sure that the importance and the past 50 years, in the past five years, for Georgetown Fairness's work is not diminished or degraded by words or actions in any way whatsoever. So, you know, you can obviously talk to me if you have questions about this. I would love to elaborate further with the mayor, with this council, on what our work for the future should concern. Obviously, like I said, justice never stops and it won't stop. You know, with this fairness passing just last month, or with our fairness ordinance bill passing just last month, it may be, it may look like it has slowed down, but it never does. Not even for myself, it never does. You know, I spend every day concerned with the rights of other people. You know, wherever they may be, whatever their background is, I'm concerned that they should all have an equal opportunity for this, for this state and for this country. So I think that's about it. I just want to thank each and every one of you again for all of your hard work. You know, I can just do whatever I can to help pass this proclamation. Because I think, you know, especially 100 years from now, that people should remember the struggles of what we had to go through to get to this point in time. I think that's absolutely necessary. So, you know, I'll do whatever work is necessary, Georgetown Fairness will do whatever work is necessary to issue, to get this proclamation worked out, typed up. I'm not really quite sure how those work. But we'll do whatever work is necessary to make sure that our work is not diminished in any way whatsoever. So I want to thank each and every one of you again and just thank you for the publicity.
Actually, I would like to make a comment.
Yes, ma'am.
After the meeting, Mr. Dahl and I have gone to church together and we've gone to St. John's together for two, three years. I mean, I've gone there for at least six years. And I've known his grandfather, Tom Carlin. He used to come to my house, so I've known your family quite well. And I just would like to say, you know, I'm sorry that you feel that way, but after, even after you spoke at the other meeting, I went up to you and I told you that I was proud of you. And that I was proud of you for getting up and expressing yourself. And then I know it was very difficult for you. And I said that to you in front of the mayor. And I just wanted to say that, you know, even though I did not vote for it, you know, I appreciated that you were able to get up and say what you did. So I think, and as I said in my, in my letter to the editor, I think it's time for us to move forward and work together instead of still be combative. And I think we need to work to make Georgetown the best place it can be.
Certainly.
So I just wanted to say that. So thank you for your time.
Thank you.
And since, Michael, this is the first I'd heard of a proclamation, that would be something the council would need to discuss at a future date. Thank you. Next on the sign-in list is Ms. Laurie Saunders. I think it's home for the holidays, Laurie.
You know it. It's coming up already. I know. It's, so the Home for the Holidays Parade, the theme is going to be Singing in the Season. It is going to be on December the 7th at 6:00 PM, once we get permission from you all, the council members. We are asking for the street closures about a half hour in advance, so 5:30. In addition, the square at 3:00 PM, because we'll have some free hot chocolate and some popcorn vendors down there also. One of the things that we've added this year, which we're really excited about, which the writing's really tighty, so, is we are asking for permission for Memorial Drive to be closed from 2:00 until 5:30. It is going to be a celebration of Christmas and community. So we're working in conjunction with Georgetown College to have some of the activities that we used to have on the square, we're going to take them to Memorial Drive and the college is going to oversee those festivities. And then, of course, the museum will be hosting Letters to Santa. And then we'll have pictures with Santa in City Hall, like we did last year, if you all will let us do that. So we're very excited. We've got a beautiful tree. I've got a great craft project for the ornaments, so we're going to be putting out a day to have people come to our office and help us make them. We'll see how that works. I get great ideas and they don't always pan out, but I'm hoping this will. But we do have a beautiful tree for the tree lighting also. So I'm just asking permission to do the street closures.
Motion, Mayor.
I'll second.
And seconded. No questions for Laurie? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? You can have your celebrations.
I just would like to thank her because she does so much work on all the Christmas events and just making it so special here and it's one of a kind. And I would also like to thank her for the fall arrangements, for the fall decorations that she put at all the entrances, something we chatted about.
We're going to do Christmas.
And she's going to do Christmas now, but it just really, you know, those little things just make such a difference when people come to our town. It's the little touches that really...
Yeah. I appreciate you reaching out and doing something there and making us think out of the box and sending it to the entryways and doing something for the holidays too. We love to hear those ideas. Sometimes they're very easy for us to do, we just need that communication. Yeah.
The fact that Laurie got a Christmas tree is a big deal, folks. There was so much concern about an appropriate tree, that Laurie was threatening to do a Charlie Brown Christmas. Have a little crooked, ugly Christmas tree in the town square.
I was a little bit worried we were going to have to do a Charlie Brown. But you know, in the end, it turned out beautiful, so this one would have taken.
Thank you, Laurie.
Mayor, can I ask Laurie a quick question? Did southern states, did you work with them at all on their landscaping?
Yes, I worked with southern states and gave them permits and helped with some of the financing.
Okay.
Get that done. It is not completed.
Yeah.
There are more plants to go in it. And then we are working on signs also. So we want to do like about a four by eight sign that will have like, like they do the car wrap, so that we can make it seasonal throughout the year. So we would capture, you know, of course, this time of the year, fall, you know, featuring all of our farms and potentially Keeneland. And then in the winter, it may go back to a generic welcome. Then in the spring, we've got 400 and Keeneland, the racehorse is going on, and Old Friends. So then we would, you know, kind of work on a sign that would look like that. But we're looking at four to five. We're in the design process right now, so that we can have a really nice entryway right into downtown Florida.
Well, that's excellent. I'm glad you did. I know code enforcement kind of got involved with them at one time during the year and I'm glad you did as well to help them out.
We appreciated them getting involved because they saved us an extra step.
Yeah, well, good.
Which was cleaning, you know, getting the top ground cover cut off so that we could actually work with it.
Well, if you go across 460, you know, the city's had some impact there as well and that looks really nice. And so anyway, I just wanted to thank you for your efforts in getting that done.
We were bored, you know, with that area, but there's some limitations because of the railroad and the resisting ease. But they worked with us very well to, on this project, right here. And southern states said too, Corey Sparrow was wonderful to work with. When we first went to him and presented the idea, he was all in. He said, "Just tell me what I need to do and what I can do to help."
Well, as you go up the 460 towards town on the left, there'll be some improvements there as well. And that'll all be privately funded, so, but, you know, we'd be glad to have any input that you might have, so that'll get cleaned up.
When I saw the southern states project, I thought that looked kind of like an interstate ramp.
Yeah, well, there you go.
Got to have flowers on interstates.
That's wildflowers.
Okay.
So there will be, there's more plants to go in, but that center is wildflowers. So we're hoping that every season, you know, we'll have some beautiful different wildflowers coming up and they'll just reseed each year. We'll see how it looks, you know, next spring when the flowers start popping up. We might have to make an adjustment, but we wanted to try.
I think it's going to look nice. Thank you.
Laurie, hopefully at some point, we can talk to you a little bit about lighting up a water tower that Chase has some authority over.
We've been talking about that.
Conversation, we're always talking about that.
Okay, all right, all right. Well, this body's very enthusiastic about that, so.
Well, I will wait for your call.
The head of the body right here.
Thanks.
Yes, you can call me.
We'll do it.
Okay.
All right.
Get the seven other bodies.
Thank you, Laurie. Next on the public sign-in sheet is Ms. Jackie Anders with the news graphic.
Sorry, just wanted to introduce myself. I'm the new reporter for the news graphic. I'll be covering this at my break, so you'll see me at the news.
Welcome.
Welcome, nice to see you.
Thank you.
Next on the sign-in sheet is Ms. Millie Roblesky.
Calling Michael, calling Michael to the microphone. My name is Millie Roblesky. I'm sure you all know me by now. Just want to say a few words. I wasn't sure if Michael was going to be here tonight or what he was going to say, but I have a little bit different of a set of comments to make. First, I want to reiterate what Michael said and thank you all sincerely for the work you did for the fairness ordinance. Those of you who were instrumental in getting that passed, your determination to do the right thing has helped even the playing field a little and it is greatly appreciated by so many people. I wish you could know the impact that it has, just that step that you've taken so far. Unfortunately, there is another side to this issue. The comments that were made by the council members after the vote, I still feel like they need to be addressed. The statements such as, "I'm going to vote what's right for me," those are the statements that concern me. So I'll reiterate what I said before the vote. Freedom of religion is that, is just that. You can't make a statement that, "I'm going to vote what's right for me," or, "I'm going to vote based on my Christian morals," when you're sitting in this seat. No one is forcing anything on you and likewise, you can't force that on anyone else. So what I want to make sure is understood is you are representing everyone. And before you jump to what has been a grossly inaccurate statement that I've seen a couple of times now that, "Oh, I got a lot of calls against it, so I voted with the majority." No. You are also tasked as public officials with protecting the rights of others, including minority groups. That is your job. So that leads me to my next concern. Ms. Erdley's statement, initially that this item should be put to a public vote, and later that one of the reasons she voted against it was because the majority of calls she got from her constituents. There are so many flaws with this. That's not how this works. The rights of individuals and minority groups especially should be protected by law to safeguard against the majority abusing a minority group. And a sitting council member should know this. If you truly believe that basic rights for anyone should be subject to a simple majority vote, I don't believe you should be in that seat. And further, something else that really bothers me is to respond to a complaint filed with an ethics board by sending a letter to the local paper calling the complaint fraudulent, meritless, and bogus, instead of actually concerning yourself with why citizens took time and effort to file it speaks volumes. It was none of those. It wasn't fraudulent, it wasn't bogus. Just because it didn't conform to specific guidelines of the ethics board rules, which actually are not available to citizens. So just so you're aware of that. Just because it didn't meet their guidelines, it's still a valid concern, a very valid concern. The nature of the complaint was also grossly misrepresented in your letter to the paper, Ms. Erdley. It wasn't filed because you voted against the ordinance, because as we know, there were three no votes and one of those no votes is not included in that complaint. This was filed, as you are well aware, because of your unacceptable behavior. To laugh at and mock the people who sincerely asked you to simply offer them fairness as it relates to the basic needs of housing and employment, and especially after being in this room as long as I was, and hearing the prejudices that were fully on display in this room, I believe it is reprehensible. I'll use that word, it is reprehensible. And the statements prompted by you, Ms. Erdley, were not only cruel and unnecessary, but also ignorant. I'm not going to repeat them, you've all heard them. But that exchange that you had after the vote while sitting in those seats, and those council seats with microphones, demonstrated to me your lack of understanding, which to me demonstrates your refusal to understand the topic that was before you. And let me also clarify that the problem isn't that the words were overheard, because that's what I've heard from you, Mr. Thompson, and at least you said that much, that, you know, maybe you should have had a better choice of words. My concern is that the words that you said demonstrate your dismissive treatment of this extremely serious issue and those who brought it to you for consideration. Maybe you don't think it's serious because you don't think it affects you, but I'll refer you back to what your job is as city council member. Far from the harassment that you allege is the reason for this complaint, it is actually to hold you accountable for your actions. And I heard this recently, accountability feels like an attack when you're not ready to acknowledge how your behavior harms others. So I'm asking both of you, Mr. Thompson and Ms. Erdley, to attend diversity and inclusion training on your own time and at your own expense, so that you can understand why your behavior was so inappropriate. And I would also ask that after that training, you both offer a sincere apology for your behavior and your comments to this city, because I feel like it was an embarrassment to our city. If you don't feel like you're able to do that, I would ask that you step down from your seats. I don't think you're capable of meeting the requirements of your position. I would also like us to move forward. I would love to not be here again tonight, taking off work for the third time to address this, because it shouldn't be necessary, but I'm here again. I would like to move forward from this too, but I feel like other issues like this can come before this board. And I feel like we need some assurance that you understand what your position is and how to meet the expectations of the office that you ran for. So that's my request to you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next on the public sign-in sheet is Mr. Jerry McAllister.
They say a picture is worth a thousand words, so I can say about 6,000 words. I've got an iPad here and I'll just pass it around and you can look at it and then that's what I've got to say. You can just swipe through there so you can see what I'm talking about.
Thank you.
My concern is about the residence at 142 South Bold Forbes in Derby Estates. That property is owned by myself and my daughter. My daughter lives there. It was wonderful until they decided to add a water problem. What they did is they came in and they buried a pipe for the drainage of rainwater to go towards South Bold Forbes. They ended it in the middle of my daughter's property, which is not her property, it's the right of way, so there's no problem with that. If you look up the way, they built some nice new fences, put in nice grass. From my daughter's property line down, the pipe comes out right in the middle of the yard. It does not drain all the way to the street. It leaves standing water, which is great for breeding of mosquitoes. It was so wet that she couldn't mow the lawn and it got so high she couldn't mow it. I've talked to the engineers, city engineers, a couple of times, and I talked to the contractor. Contractor said he could only do what he was allowed to do and paid to do. So talked to the city engineers, they were supposed to address it. It's never been addressed. I would like to know if the city can take a look at that again and do something so that the water can flow through and clean that up a little bit.
Mr. McAllister, I appreciate you bringing the pictures. The council knows a whole lot about this drainage issue. As we dealt with it for, it seemed like over a year when we were struggling to reach a solution. But it seems like everything we do, there's always one outcome that we didn't plan on. And that's apparently what's happened to this property. You have talked with Mr. Hightower, Eddie Hightower?
Is he an engineering?
He's the city engineer here.
Probably. I don't remember who I talked to, just from the parties.
Okay. We'd be glad to, I see they even put down some of that material that grass is supposed to grow through.
I never knew that grass could grow through plastic. It's like three layers thick. And so nothing's growing through. And it would have been better just to have seeded, put some straw on, and at least we could have got the weeds to grow back again. I know at the other end of the subdivision, up towards Secretariat, they put a really nice channel through there, they built a wall and it goes all the way down to the creek. When they proposed this, we didn't care that they did, but I thought it was kind of unusual that they would have a three-foot pipe come out right in the middle of the yard instead of extending it on down to the street where it could go under and go on through. But we'd just like to get something done. She hasn't been able to mow that area of the yard. She always mowed the whole right of way. And now she just mows about up to her property line because the weeds were so bad she couldn't do anything else.
Yeah. Would be, when we had our staff meeting earlier this afternoon, I released Mr. Hightower to go home after I looked at the agenda and realized there wasn't anything to do with engineering on here. So I don't have Mr. Hightower here tonight to help us with the conversation, but we'd be glad to get with him.
If he wants to follow up with me, that's fine. I'm a better person to follow up with than my daughter.
Does he have your phone number or email?
No, but I can give you a card.
Yeah, absolutely.
If you would, that'd be helpful and we'll be glad to take a look at it. The council tried to fix one problem and it sounds like we may have run out of money.
You fixed the whole block problem, it created another.
We're good at that.
We're so sorry. We really thought we had that fixed, sir.
Yeah. Thank you, Mr. McAllister. And that is all the folks that have signed in for public comment. Young man, the scout had to leave. I was going to introduce him. He was here working on the merit badge and he had to come to a council meeting for a while. I think we wore him out and he left. He said he could only stay for about 30, first 30 minutes of the meeting, but sorry that we didn't get to embarrass him by introducing him. Next, under Mayor's comments, several things to go through with you all tonight. Probably the one that I've received the most phone calls about and you all probably received the most phone calls about is trick or treat. What are we going to do about trick or treat? Historically, we've always stayed on Halloween night, because every time we've tried to move it off of Halloween night, it ends up being a problem. Couple of years ago, we were recalling when inclement weather was almost certain and being predicted, Lexington went ahead and changed their night first. And then it seemed like all the little cities around Lexington, smaller cities, adopted that same schedule. This time, we've been looking all day on media sources and they're going in two different directions. There's a number of cities that have rescheduled trick or treat for tomorrow night, on Tuesday night, which seems awful early and awful quick. I think the reason they're doing that is it's scheduled to be dry and 70 degrees. Weather's going to be real wet starting Monday morning through Friday morning, and it's supposed to get significantly colder. But there have been a number of cities this afternoon that have announced they are moving their trick or treat to Friday night from 6:00 to 8:00. It's just one night later. Frankfurt has done that. Stamp and Ground announced it this afternoon. So I just wanted counsel thoughts. With a forecast that's between 90 and 100% rain, are we doing the right thing by parents and children by leaving it on Halloween night? Or would we be better to consider Friday night? Before we came in for the meeting, I had a chance to talk with Judge Covington, since we obviously want to match what each the other does. And he had a couple of magistrates with him at a committee meeting and they seem to be very comfortable with Friday evening from 6:00 to 8:00. Chief, do you have any thoughts either way on? Okay.
Are there football games on Friday night this week?
Probably.
Yeah. Is that affecting at all?
Conflicts everywhere.
Everywhere, yeah.
All over the place.
It's going to be 49 degrees to high on Friday.
It's going to be cold.
And the low will be.
But it's at least dry.
They got, when I'm looking at Thursday night, it just says cloudy, the rain's over with it.
And if we leave it and get lucky, I'm good, but we had so many questions, and it was the day of a council meeting, I thought it was good just to kind of toss this one up and see what everybody thought.
I do know with the chamber, and also I heard at tourism, the phones were ringing off the hook with people wanting to know, you know, what date it was going to be and everything and about being changed, so.
They started early, they started early this morning. It is a big topic. It's, we have important business to do tonight, but this is the thing that's going to get the most attention, is what I can tell you.
Yeah. I've had more people ask me about doing it Tuesday because of the warm weather and everything being nice. I realize it's short notice, but.
I don't know. I don't have the best answer, Mayor. Everybody's got an opinion.
Well, I can guarantee every council member that whatever we decide will be incorrect for some group of people.
Well, the only other thing, I'm looking at the weather, the only other thing to think about because of the Friday night games is it's going to be totally sunny on Sunday.
It's too far out.
Too far away.
Okay.
That's November 3rd.
I had an opinion on that one.
And typically what we find, anytime we move it, there will be some group of parents who have made arrangements to be off work. They may have family that have traveled in to do this with new grandchildren. So we always upset the apple cart with these decisions, so I just wanted to kind of share the pain with you. And plus, we had set the date by council action, so I felt it appropriate to ask the council to do that.
Well, at the end of the day, just take a chance and take an umbrella, just move on.
Are you all okay with that?
For Thursday night, like we said?
Is it a Thursday night?
It's a short notice to try to get it out to let the parents know, even if you do it on Friday and Thursday.
When we did it, was it two years ago, Andrew? Two or three years ago? We just blasted it out on social media.
Yeah.
Put it on our Facebook page, put it on TBS Facebook page.
The paper, yeah.
Be notified, you know, LAX and KYT.
Yeah, the news stations are going crazy with up-to-date lists on which city is doing what, when, and who's checking.
What cities have moved it to tomorrow night? Just out of curiosity, do you have that list?
At least from earlier today, yes. Bergen, Campton, some have gone to November 2nd, Saturday night. Lancaster has gone to Tuesday night. Mount Sterling has gone to Tuesday night, Mount Vernon has gone Tuesday night. Most of the others are either in West Liberty.
I would rather do it Friday night.
Most of the others have either stayed, to this point, are still on Halloween, or they've gone to a Friday.
Yeah, but the parents might have kids.
Man, you know, the thing, you know, I'm thinking about on Friday night is there's so many parents that get out and they push their kids in strollers, and they try to, you know, they take, you know, if they can, whether putting, they take their time, they try to enjoy themselves, talk to their neighbors, and that's not going to be very conducive Friday night, at least from my perspective and experience with trick-or-treating. So, I don't know. No matter what you do, you're going to upset somebody, and you're going to please others, so. Tomorrow night's the best night from a weather perspective, there's no doubt.
Yeah, and I have to agree with that. I don't know.
How quick a notice? Wasn't it short notice when we switched it the last time? I feel like you made some quick calls the day before or something.
It was more than 24 hours.
It was more than.
Was it?
We've got less than 24 hours.
You're only two days out from Halloween if you do it Friday or Saturday.
Thursday it's going to be warm. 69, right? That night?
Thursday, 65 and 100% chance of rain. That is trick-or-treat.
It is, it's dropping. 33, to be exact, of where the weather at says.
Then Friday night's going to be cold but dry.
Mm-hmm.
Which one are you a little bit? You have to wear coats.
Folks, this is real democracy.
Actually, it is.
It is, it is real democracy.
I can remember trick-or-treating when it was cold, colder than a well digger, and I put on a coat over my costume and go on and get the candy. It's all about the candy.
Well, the only hope we have that maybe the rain's out of here by Thursday night. Because it doesn't say rain Thursday night, but it didn't say when it's going to cut off either.
I'm leaning towards keeping it where it is.
It says rain likely Thursday morning with temperatures so-and-so, chance of rain an inch, and then it says Thursday night cloudy.
You know, we don't have any control over the weather, you know, and if we try to do it for tomorrow night, it's not enough notice.
No, it really isn't.
And then you don't want to push it too far out, so.
You want, you couldn't do it Friday night, couldn't do it Saturday night, because that's people's family night, so I'd leave it where it's at personally.
Okay. If there's not a motion to change it, you've already voted for Thursday night from 6:00 to 8:00?
The people that contacted me and asked me about trick-or-treat, I told them that we had already decided to do it on trick-or-treat night, and the only time that I could see it change would be tonight if we talked about it, so.
Mayor, I'll crack the door open a little bit and say, on Wednesday, I mean, if things look like it's just going to be horrible on Thursday, you want to make some calls or make a decision to move it to Friday, I mean, that would be the only other option I can think of if we don't do it tomorrow night.
Okay.
You know, I mean, if it came right down to it and.
That at least gets us a little bit closer in terms of the weather forecast, which might be more certain as we get closer. So unless we have overwhelming evidence, a problem, we leave it Thursday.
Yeah, I said it's just going to be cold, it's not going to rain till after trick-or-treat.
Okay, thank you.
That's what I say. Claiming it.
No, it's going to stop before trick-or-treat.
Or rain after.
Several things to bring you up to date on. This gentleman will not like this announcement, but Don Mather is retiring from the Georgetown Police Department, and that is a real loss for us. He has been a stalwart in our department, and this is one where Captain Mather does not want to retire, and we don't want him to retire. But changes to the retirement actuarial tables have forced him to retire before the end of this month. The way they changed the tables, if he doesn't retire before the end of this month, he'll lose around $250 a month out of his retirement check for the rest of his life, which is too much to ask of anybody to do. So this is a departure that is sad for the employee and for us, but he's been an outstanding member of the chief's team, and we're going to be sorry to lose him. Just wanted you all to know that, that these retirement issues are real, and they're really affecting people's plans. Lanes Run Business Park continues to have progress. All the block tops now in the first course. Talked with Richard Hamilton, he believes that they'll get ours completely finished before it's done. Sidewalks are going in, water lines are going in, and there's finally a lot of progress out there. Just again to mention something that's on all of our minds, the 2020 census is going to be a real important deal. Just the more aware you all are and can talk it up with folks, that'll be helpful. Judge Covington and I are going to get together and form a local committee to promote an accurate count for that. Also, some news that, some information that Devin has recently received, I think that really helps us with the question of local Human Rights Commission versus the state's Human Rights Commission versus any other options that may be in the fairness ordinance for council consideration. The very good news that we've received, I think it's good news, is that we've learned that we can have a local Human Rights Commission to hear only cases from sexual orientation and gender identity, and leave the other federally protected classes still heard by the state Human Rights Commission in Frankfurt, which is arrangement we've had since the inception of our Human Rights Ordinance. So the fact that we can have a local commission and still send the other complaints to Frankfurt will be our recommendation. We will need to bring to you changes to the Human Rights Commission ordinance, because right now it is 30 or 40 years old, it calls for 12 members, it calls for some things that are pretty unwieldy. So we will want to make changes to that ordinance so that it better reflects what our current circumstances are, but we think that makes this decision about how to handle local complaints of these type a lot simpler for the council to make, so.
And if I may add, actually, in talking to the state Human Rights folks, other than Lexington and Louisville, all of the other smaller jurisdictions operate that way. So all of their local commissions funnel the other complaints to the state, since those are protected under state law. So this wouldn't be any kind of departure from how other smaller jurisdictions are treating their fairness ordinances. So that was, we got a lot more information on that.
So hopefully that, I think that reflects the wishes of many of the council members. So I think when we bring that, that'll be a much easier conversation, that we have a local commission for those two protected classes, we use the state commission for the federally protected classes.
And the commission would still be able to accept complaints from other classes and funnel them through the proper channels and kind of guide any complainant based on disability, age, gender, any of those already protected classes, they would be able to facilitate that to the state, so.
That was new information for us that we wanted to share with the council. I'm at the point of Mayor's comments where I get to take some personal privilege. We've lost one of the finest citizens this community's ever had with Lou Hoffman. He was the best volunteer this community's ever had, and he was for years and years and years. So we've lost Lou, and we thought it appropriate to have a resolution, we styled it as a resolution so council can vote on it. And what we've tried to do is not just honor the life of Lou Hoffman, but to use Lou's life as a reminder to the rest of us to volunteer and do great things for your community. So we're going to pass this resolution now, but we're actually making Lou Hoffman Day on his birthday next July. And we can turn that into a day of service, is what I hope that we'll do in Lou's honor. I also have a proclamation tonight from a separate organization that looks at Kentucky cities, it's the Extra Mile Group, and Georgetown is recognized as an extra mile city for the amount of volunteer activity we have. And we have a proclamation also that I will sign, it doesn't require council action, but it talks about the mission of Extra Mile America, and it's an effort to shine a light and celebrate individuals and organizations who go the extra mile to make a difference and lift up fellow members of their community. That is Lou Hoffman. So this is kind of a segue. Lou Hoffman is an extra mile citizen of Georgetown, and rather than burden Tracy with reading a proclamation about her dad, I've asked Devin if she'll do that for us tonight.
I am very happy to read it. A resolution recognizing July 13th as Lou Hoffman Day and encouraging others to undertake acts of service in his memory. Whereas it is appropriate to commemorate Louis F. Hoffman, a valued and integral member of the Georgetown community on the occasion of his passing. And whereas Mr. Hoffman was a lifelong active member of the First Presbyterian Church, where he is recognized as being the longest continuing member of the church, and where he served as deacon, was ordained as an elder, and served the church on numerous committees over the years. And whereas Mr. Hoffman worked with other members of the community to establish the Georgetown Child Development Center, which has been in operation since 1972 and was the first public daycare in the city of Georgetown. And whereas Mr. Hoffman served on many local boards over the years, including the Scott County Board of Education, the Scott County Parks and Recreation Board, the Cardom Center Board, the Scott County United Way Board, the DARE Advisory Board, and the Child Development Board. And whereas Mr. Hoffman's service to the community was a boots-on-the-ground effort as he worked with the Amen House regularly through food donation and pickups from local businesses and God's Pantry in Lexington, aided Habitat for Humanity and its local efforts, and ran the Meals on Wheels program for 24 years. And whereas Mr. Hoffman's extensive service to the community precipitated his receipt of the second-ever Jim Reed Community Service Award, presented annually by the Georgetown-Scott County Chamber of Commerce, and has set him up to be inducted into the first class of the Scott County Hall of Fame. Now therefore, be it resolved by the city of Georgetown that the Georgetown City Council does hereby honor the memory of Louis F. Hoffman by declaring July 13th Lou Hoffman Day, and does henceforth encourage those who knew and loved Lou to take on an act of service in his memory each day or each year on this day.
Motion made.
Thank you.
Second.
Motion's been made, and we got seconds everywhere. I'll let you do it. I told Tracy this earlier, it's those rare mornings when you get up and you just don't have anything in the house, there's no milk, there's not anything you need, and you have to make that dreaded early morning trip to Kroger's. I mean, you throw on the sweats and you just head out. I've only had to do that a couple of times, but every time I've had to do that, Lou Hoffman has been at Kroger's loading up his pickup truck with bread to take to the Amen House. So, real proud of this resolution, and all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Think we have two of Lou's daughters here tonight.
Oh.
Sister-in-law.
Okay, oh, that just got.
Sister-in-law.
I don't have my contacts in, I'm looking back here.
That was a compliment.
Here, Tom, Tom.
Thank you. I can read okay, it's the distance thing, Marvin. Okay, well, thank you all. Under GMWSS, Chase. Let's see, Chase, we've got a handful of things for you to do, but we actually, if I could change the order of the agenda just a little bit, we have some folks waiting here tonight, but I actually have a meter running. So with council's permission, Chase, I'll go ahead and take number eight.
Oh, yes.
And that would be first reading of the annexation ordinance for 1140 East Main Street, Mr. Stone and Ms. Tackett as sponsors. Bruce, I moved you up.
He's going to get up now.
I know.
No, we don't need you, we just moved the order of the agenda, so you don't have to wait any longer. So, no, we haven't voted yet. It's your turn.
It's your turn. First reading, isn't it? No vote.
Okay.
The property in question's about 17.8 acres. It's currently zoned A1, and it's located outside city limits. It went through planning commission without any real contention that I was aware of, and it's recommended for approval.
What's the ultimate classification it's going?
Oh, yes. They're requesting an R2 zoning, it's a medium-density residential. You know, I'm not entirely sure what the goal is for its final ultimate use. My understanding is that the applicant's looking to rezone so that they can market and sell it.
Good.
Is it on the east side of the bypass, or is it on the west side of the bypass?
It's on the east side, it's right along the interstate.
Okay.
It's right across from East Main Estates, right?
Yes.
Yeah.
Why don't we go ahead and have, perfe?
The annexation, right. An ordinance annexing into the city of Georgetown certain real property containing 17.311 acres located at 1140 East Main Street extended in Scott County, Kentucky. Summary, one, rezoning 17.311 acres located at 1140 East Main Street extended Georgetown, Kentucky from A1 agricultural to R2 residential. Two, provides for an effective date upon passage and publication. All here induced and read for the first time October 28, 2019.
Thank you. First reading.
Easy question.
Well, that was first reading of the annexation, Bruce, and we'll have first reading of the zone change now.
An ordinance changing the zoning classification of certain real property containing a total of 17.311 acres located at 1140 East Main Street extended in Georgetown, Scott County, Kentucky from A1 to R2. Summary, one, rezoning 17.311 acres located at 1140 East Main Street extended Georgetown, Kentucky from A1 agricultural to R2 residential. Two, provides for an effective date upon. Kentucky from A1 agricultural to R2 residential. Two, provides for an effective date upon passage and publication. Publicly introduced and read for the first time October twenty-eighth, twenty nineteen.
Thank you, that's second reading, or first reading of that particular ordinance, and we'll look at second reading. And any questions that we may have when we get to that point? Matt, you should anticipate some questions in two weeks. I've talked with some council members, in particular, Mr. Showalter and I have talked. Just, I think all the council shares concerns about residential growth and its ability to pay for itself. And that will, in fact, Mark and I just talked today about this issue, and his concern about this annexation. When Andrew and I are in a position to present the analysis that we've been working on, that hopefully we're within the next month of presenting that to the council, it will give the context for this conversation in a more meaningful way. So, you might anticipate those questions, they're real, but I think it will become even more relevant after we make our presentation about expenditures and revenues.
Okay.
Is that fair, Mark? Okay. Thank you, Bruce.
Thank you.
All right. Yeah, back up to water now, because they're gone now. Okay, Chase, you're back on. Sorry about that, Chase.
No problem. Thank you for the time tonight. Georgetown municipal has, it's like six items for council consideration. First is the second reading of our bond ordinance that is one of our financing tools that we're basing our annual budget on this year, that we looked at within our rate study. So, it's a bond anticipation note.
This is the anticipation.
Yes. And this is for funding the design of the wastewater treatment plant, number one expansion, and to show the beginning construction startup costs.
Yes, ma'am.
Summary of bond ordinance and notice of adoption. At a meeting held on October the twenty-eighth, twenty nineteen, the city of Georgetown, Kentucky gave second reading to and enacted an ordinance entitled "An Ordinance of the City of Georgetown, Kentucky, authorizing the issuance of a Water and Sewer Revenue Bond Anticipation Note, twenty nineteen Series A, in a principal amount not to exceed six million dollars to provide interim financing in anticipation of the issuance of one or more series of water and sewer revenue bonds. Approving the form of the note authorizing designated officers to execute and deliver the note, providing for the payment and security of the note, establishing a net redemption fund, cost of issuance account, and construction account, ordering the sale of the note to Kentucky Bank, Paris, Kentucky, and repealing inconsistent ordinances. This ordinance authorizes the issuance of a Revenue Bond Anticipation Note by the city of Georgetown, Kentucky, the city, and maximum principal amount of six million dollars. The note to provide monies to finance the cost of the construction of additions and improvements to the city's combined and consolidated water and sanitary sewer system on an interim basis in anticipation of the future issuance on one or more series of the city's water and sewer revenue bonds, and to pay the cost of issuing the note. Related to the note, the ordinance also appears the sale of the note to Kentucky Bank, Paris, Kentucky, based upon the prior solicitation by the city of bids for the note from at least three responsible bidders in accordance with the Kentucky revised statute. The note is to bear interest at a rate per annum of two point six-one percent and shall mature approximately five years after its date of issuance. The city clerk of the city of Georgetown, Kentucky hereby certifies that the above summary is true and correct and written in a way calculated to inform the public of its content. References made to fill the text of the ordinance which may be reviewed at the office of the city clerk Georgetown, Kentucky, in the Georgetown City Hall, one hundred North Court Street, Georgetown, Kentucky, four three two four, for a complete statement of its provisions and terms."
Thank you. Is there a motion for approval?
Thank you, motion for approval, mayor.
Thank you.
Second, mayor.
And seconded. If there are any questions for Chase, he will serve as his own bond counsel tonight.
Do my best.
And if there are no questions for Chase, we'll call the roll.
Mrs. Tinglesems?
Okay.
Yes.
Mrs. Lesby-Bitche?
Yes.
Mr. Lesby?
Yes.
Ms. Singer-Erdley?
Yes.
Mr. Thompson?
Yes.
Ms. Tackett?
Yes.
Mr. Showalter?
Yes. Thank you. That ordinance passes, Chase.
Thank you. Second item is our annual chemical bid recommendations. We put those out once a year in the late summer, early fall, and that's just unit price contracts for the chemicals that we need on a daily basis at the water treatment plant and the wastewater treatment plants. We'll be issuing unit price contracts to six vendors that have bid, and that's done on low bid for procurement of those chemicals. We have that for your consideration tonight.
Motion, mayor.
Thank you, motion's been made to accept the chemical bid recommendation.
I'll second.
And seconded. If there are no questions, all in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? After we've had such good luck with our enterprise fleet management agreement, I think the water company's gonna give it a shot, is that correct?
That's correct. We were skeptical at first, and Enterprise got us on board, and then they very quickly got our board of commissioners behind it. And so, that is, that contract has been approved, and so we're bringing it tonight. Same concept, same contract documents as the city has for their fleet management services. We'd like to do the same thing to help better manage our fleet and take advantage of their, the savings we can see with their selling powers, what we saw as the biggest upside. I will point out that the only difference is that we will continue to buy our vehicles through Enterprise, whereas the city leases them. And we're doing that because through our, one of our sewer, water sewer ordinances, we have to put that money aside in each budget for purchase of vehicles. So, we have that money to purchase those, but we still see upside with having fleet management services.
Motion, mayor.
Thank you.
I'll second.
And seconded. If there are no questions for Chase, all in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, Chase?
We finally have three purchase orders, items D, E, and F. D and E are for GRW Engineering, that's continued work on the wastewater treatment plant upgrade for the months of June, July, and August. The purchase orders were thirty thousand seven hundred eight dollars sixty-five cents, that was for June and July, and then thirteen thousand six hundred for August. They're continuing right now with their alternatives analysis and their facilities planning, much like we did with the south sewer extension, where we went through a number of design alternatives to figure out what would be the best biological treatment process, and what's gonna give us the best total, the lowest total cost of ownership for a plant expansion. That's what we're working on right now. That's what these invoices are for.
Good. Are we just taking the two engineering contracts now, Chase, or you?
Or the labor.
I'm sorry, the D and E, those are the purchase orders, I'm sorry. I can go ahead and hit, F was for Herick Company, and that was for emergency repair of clarifier one at, I'm sorry, clarifier number two at wastewater treatment plant one. That was for fourteen thousand seven hundred and fifty dollars. We needed to get that clarifier back in service. Luckily, with the dry weather, we haven't had to use both clarifiers, but if we get a lot of rain, we have to have both of those in service.
Is there a motion for those?
I make a motion.
Thank you.
Second.
And seconded. No questions for Chase, all in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. And Chase, if you could step there for me?
Yes, sir.
We'll drop all the way down to city attorney, item C. Something that's been on all of our minds is a study of our source, our primary source of water in the city of Georgetown. This has been on all of our minds. When Chase and his board looked at their list of capital projects and included what they could in our rate increase in our five-year capital plan, they included a study of water sources, but they didn't include it in the capital plan until two or three years down the road.
Actually, I was, it's next year, it's next year.
Still, well, it's that.
It won't be as quick as we'd like it.
Okay. Judge Covington and I have been talking with Chase, we all have concerns, having just gone through the drought, and understanding what the limitations of the river are and what our groundwater sources are, that we didn't want to wait any longer to start studying this issue. We need the time. So, the city and the county have agreed to jointly fund this project for GMWSS in an amount that we think will be around eighty-five thousand dollars, shared between the city and county government. The idea is when we get to that point in the cycle with GMWSS, the water company will be in a position to reimburse the city and the county for these funds that we're advancing now to get it done on a schedule that suits us better. So, I felt pretty comfortable asking about a water supply analysis, given what we've been, just been through, but that's the nature of this request.
What's involved with that?
We will, I think, work with its procurement of a engineering consultant, and they will look at probably four or five different alternatives. We have a good start with a study that was done in two thousand and six. That study identified those. We just need to take a fresh look at updating cost estimates with those alternatives, possibly looking at adding one or two, or seeing if there's alternatives that could work together, whether it be a pipeline to the Kentucky River, a pipeline to the Ohio River, whether it be a reservoir solution, whether it be a combination of multiple alternatives there, and just looking at the cost analysis for what those would cost and what benefit they would give us.
So, the pipeline to the Ohio River, which has been talked about for twenty years, that on the analysis of going through, sharing through Frankfurt, Louisville, Shelbyville?
That's something that we would have to do with the study, that's something we would look at.
Okay, you can't do some of that in-house, or do you just not have the time to do it in-house?
Both. Both. I think that, I think that we could definitely, in-house, we could talk to those utilities, we can talk to Louisville Water Company, who's, I've been told in the past have discussed installing a pipeline to Frankfurt. I don't know where that stands, I don't know if that's really reality, but an alternative could be, you know, how could we partner with Louisville Water Company and other utilities that would benefit, to see if that's feasible. We could do parts of that. I think, big picture, looking at the cost analysis, we can't do that kind of work in-house.
Okay, yeah, because that was, when I was mayor, we talked about that very seriously with hooking on with the Ohio through Louisville, and we weren't that far off of being able to do that, but far enough it prevented us from doing it, so.
One thing that we looked at, just a pipeline to the Kentucky River, we sat in a meeting earlier this year with the mayor, the judge, and Division of Water, and they said, well, Kentucky River might not be a good source because it's not drought-proof. Until this year, I would have laughed in their face and said, no way.
Well, actually, that was discussed back when I was mayor, about that, that the Kentucky River would not be as substantial, there's too much growth in central Kentucky for the Kentucky River to sustain us here, that you're going to have to go to the Ohio River.
I would have not believed that until this year. So, I say that I was very wrong.
Yeah, the Ohio is considered an inexhaustible supply.
Yes, yes.
The Ohio's not going to run out of water.
That's correct.
Frankfurt, we know from experience this year and in prior years, while it hasn't bottomed out, it has gotten stagnant. So, the question becomes really pressing for the city and the county, because the judge gets questions about the reservoir project, and should the county pursue that again. This study will help us understand if the cost of pursuing that reservoir is worthwhile, given the long-term picture. Chase has pointed out to me, when the reservoir was originally designed, its planning horizon was two thousand nineteen, that's this year. So, even by planning horizons, when the reservoir first started to be talked about, it was thought we'd max it out in this year. And so, we're not sure if the reservoir remains a viable, it's not a viable single-source option. It may be worthwhile as a buffer, but these are the questions that we need, we need financial analysis to help us understand what is the correct path for us to take. This is such a big ticket item, we can't go down the wrong path.
That's correct.
We need to make certain of the path we're on, and this is the way we'll do it.
Make a motion, mayor.
I'll second.
Second. If there are no questions, all in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Chase?
Could I ask you a question real quick?
Chase has got a lot on his plate.
Yeah, how's the water flow coming now? So, we've had some rain?
Not a lot of change.
Nothing much.
We need a significant rain that's gonna be days, days long in duration, just really flush the.
Had to come on Halloween.
Coming on Halloween, so that'd be our treat.
Yeah.
Any other questions for Chase?
Thank you.
Thank you. Item nine on your agenda is something that we're really proud to do tonight. Would you all like to come forward? Our telecommunicators? Today, you all here may not know that today is actually telecommunicators day, first responder, dispatcher, what is today called? Dispatchers are first responders?
That's what we would like to be called, yes.
Yes. This resolution recognizes the telecommunicators of the Georgetown-Scott County nine-one-one center as first responders. They are the lifeline for everybody that's out there on the other end of the radio. And they are as an important part of this team as anyone that's out on the street. So, we're pleased to bring this resolution tonight, and I'll ask the clerk to read that.
A resolution recognizing the telecommunicators of the Georgetown-Scott County nine-one-one center as first responders. Whereas, this Georgetown City Council hereby recognizes that nine-one-one telecommunicators are part of the critical infrastructure of public safety, and without them, public safety would not be possible. And whereas, the Georgetown City Council recognizes that not only are the first responders, these selfless individuals make life-saving split-second decisions that often make the difference in the outcome of an emergency call. And whereas, the Georgetown City Council recognizes the nine-one-one telecommunicators provide care and compassion to our citizens in their worst moments, and many of these calls leave a traumatic effect on those in the nine-one-one profession, and that this is sustained by scholarly data. And whereas, the Georgetown City Council recognizes that nine-one-one telecommunicators are tasked with knowing their own agency's protocols, as well as the response protocols for every response event type, and every response agency utilizing their expertise. And whereas, the Georgetown City Council recognizes that the telecommunicators at the Georgetown-Scott County nine-one-one center undergo an extensive background check, including a suitability screener and polygraph, attend a mandatory five-week training academy, and complete a twenty-one-week interdepartmental training program, totaling more than twenty-six weeks of initial training, coupled with annual continuing education. And whereas, the Georgetown City Council recognizes that despite all of these requirements, stressors, and education training in public safety, the Federal Office of Management and Budget classifies this group of individuals as clerical staff. We dissent. And whereas, the Georgetown City Council recognizes that a nine-one-one telecommunicator is far from clerical and supports the national movement to reclassify nine-one-one telecommunicators as first responders in an effort to truly recognize the work they do. Furthermore, the Georgetown City Council supports the nine-one-one Saves Act to properly classify the profession of nine-one-one telecommunicators. And whereas, the Georgetown City Council, through this resolution, shows its support to this special group of dedicated individuals by classifying them as first responders. Now therefore, be it resolved by the city of Georgetown that the Georgetown City Council, on behalf of the city of Georgetown, its employees, its residents, and all other parties otherwise reliant upon the workings of our city, acknowledges, and by this resolution formally enters upon the permanent record recognition of Georgetown-Scott County nine-one-one center telecommunicators as first responders. The council furthermore thanks these first responders for their service to the community. This resolution was approved by the vote of the city council, city of Georgetown, on the twenty-eighth day of October twenty nineteen.
We'll make a motion, mayor. Absolutely, appreciate you very much.
And seconded.
I just want to say thank you very much, because nobody really realizes what you all do here. We go home and do our own thing and rely on you all, and you hear a lot of stuff, so I appreciate you very much. We appreciate that.
Brian, would you have anything you'd like to say to the council?
Well, I'm very appreciative that the resolution was drafted. I've been in law enforcement for the city of Georgetown for almost fifteen years, been on the road, been in investigations, but I never really truly knew what the dispatch, what they actually go through. And I've been at the nine-one-one center since April of last year, and I'm amazed what they can do. And I try to tell them, I mean, that's not a job anybody can do. It's hard to be on a phone. It's, it's hard to be on a phone, talk on the radio, run a computer, and answer people in the office. It's really, really remarkable what they're able to do. So, this means a lot for the organization, for the city, and I, I know that, that we, myself included, really appreciate the, the resolution.
Mr. Trump?
Thank you.
Very grateful for it. We're really proud of the people that we do have working in the dispatch center. They're pretty remarkable, day in and day out. We wish that they could have been here, but somebody has to.
Somebody's.
Somebody has to work. Yeah. But on behalf of them, we just want to thank you. We do appreciate just being recognized formally for that.
And let me make sure that you all know, and the council knows, and the public knows, that former police officer and current council member Todd Stone.
Yes.
Brought this to us and asked us to bring it forward to the council. So, it, it's unfortunate that Todd couldn't be here tonight to, to let us thank him for, for recognizing you all, but that was.
We do appreciate him. We still get plenty of contact with him. Thank goodness.
Well, be sure to thank him, because he's the one who kind of teed this up. We didn't vote. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you all very much.
Thank you.
Actually, I would like to say, this summer I had an opportunity, or a major issue, to call 911, and it was so, it was so helpful, the way, you know, they calmed me down and helped talk me through it and kept me on the line until the police came.
It takes a special person.
It really does. It really does, and just to provide that, that level of caring, but also professional. And, and I can't imagine, I cannot imagine having that job and having to do that.
Over and over.
Over and over and over, so, well done.
Great job.
You all really deserve everything.
Let's see. Stacy, you've been here all night.
We're saying.
Stacy was the one staff member that really had to come tonight. Well, I don't know, there's people sitting all around me that.
Have to come every time.
But we have our quarterly financial report here.
Yes. First quarter financial report is never that exciting, but we'll go through it. Our first sheet, we're going to look at the one with the graphs, the payroll tax collections. As you can see, 2019, as of right now, is at about 12.7 million dollars. Our audit is coming up in a few weeks, so, these numbers could get tweaked a little bit, just so you know, if the next time you get the report and they're a little bit different, that's why we always make a few adjustments during the audit. And you can see for fiscal year 2020, you can see what was collected for the period of July and August. And with the same thing there, that there may be a few of those receipts that are attributable to returns for the prior year that could get moved over to 2019. So, that's all you'll see would be a shift between 2020 and 2019 revenue. And then, under that, you can see the July and August incentive payments that we have made for Toyota. So, we had lowered our budget expectations a little bit for this year, based on last year having come in a little bit slow, but we budgeted 12.8 million for fiscal year 19, and right now we stand at 12.7, so, we're not being quite as far off as we had maybe thought. The last couple of months picked up a little bit. Net profits, you can look at it. I want to explain one little thing here. This is always the, the fun accounting rule that I have to do, but you'll see in June, on fiscal year 2019, we have a negative 889,000. That is because I am estimating overpayments, refunds due to people at June 3019. I contacted the Revenue Commission today. Their audit's not complete, and that's where I will get the final number, but as of right now, I'm using the same number we used for June 3018. And if you look at July of 2020 fiscal year, the million 46099, that was our June 3018 overpayments. So, what they make us do during the audit is show that as a negative on fiscal year 19 revenue. Our hope is that we get to recognize that in fiscal year 2020. And then, of course, hopefully, as those tax returns come in over the next 10 months, hopefully we'll be able to recognize some of that revenue. If not, it rolls down to June of 2020 as a negative again. We just keep carrying that credit that we owe taxpayers until we have earned that revenue, essentially. And then you can see August and September, those are always low months for us with net profits. We don't see a whole lot there. We see a little bit more as we go later on. Of course, the spring, the typical tax return due date of April 15th being where we get the biggest revenue. And we're not receiving any large estimated payments right now, so, in past years, fiscal year 16 and 17, you see those large estimated payments, but we're not getting those right now. So, the bulk of our money will come in the spring for that. And of course, we adjusted our expectations for net profits this year based on how fiscal year 19 had gone. The next one, insurance premium tax collections. Again, here, the most interesting part is seeing how fiscal year 19 ended, which is approximately 2.995 million, and we budgeted 3 million for fiscal year 2020, so I have confidence that we will meet that budget as well. And I am showing there on the October line item for insurance premium taxes, just what we've collected to date, but again, those returns are not due until October 31st, so they usually roll in the last day or even November 1st. Property tax collections, you can see where we ended last year at 1,786. We budgeted 1,780,000, so I think we can be confident in our budget number of this year, hopefully exceeding that. And you can see the, the small amount of past due property taxes that we've collected somewhat this year, and of course, that'll start picking up in the next three months, so. And finally, alcoholic beverage regulatory fees. You can see where we ended fiscal year 19 with a million 66. We budgeted a million 50 for this upcoming year, and you can see the partial collections that we've had for the first quarter. Again, those are, those returns are due October 31st, so. And then, of course, you've got your more detailed line item, revenue and expense report. You're always free to contact me if you have any questions about that. And that is all, unless you have questions.
Looks good.
Looks good. Thank you.
We're, Stacy, finished up on, on alcohol tax. We're frankly concerned about the alcohol tax and our ability to continue to collect it, which, there've been some court cases that we're following, and we're, we're trying to figure out how to best respond. Right now, we, we're at, we're at the point where, where, we have the expenses to justify spending this much money, but we're spending a million dollars of alcohol tax on the police department.
And that's about 16, for 2020, we budgeted, that's about 16% of our police department budget, with a little bit allocated to direct alcohol.
So, given the outcome of some of these court cases, that income might be in jeopardy? Just want to plant the seed now, that we're, we're concerned about that. And is that fair?
Yeah, we, I think it deserves a deeper look. It isn't as clear, and they decided to pace based on unusual circumstances. We'll give you a detailed analysis of that.
Yeah. And then we have the issue of, there's an election in just a few days, and there's a wet/dry issue on the ballot for the county, and we have a lot of open questions about tax rates and ability to tax, and so, just, I just wanted to make sure you're aware that we have, we have some complications there that we're trying to work our way through.
So, question. So, if it passes in the county, then probably our revenue will decrease, will probably decrease somewhat because of that, and so, but the county can tax it at whatever they deem, or how do they do it?
We're doing some research right now. We're afraid that the county is not allowed to add an alcohol tax.
Oh, well, then you won't have to worry about ours, because there won't be people behind the county.
Well, we do, we, we do have to worry, because that would create a tiered or unfair situation for a city-located business versus a county-located business. So, we, we have lots of stuff to learn and.
Figure out.
Thread our way through, but I wanted to let the council know that these things are perplexing issues.
Yeah.
Oh, she had a question? Ma'am, did you have a question?
Oh, no, sir, actually, just, I'm not even know if I'm supposed to talk, so I don't have to.
Item 11 on your agenda from the police department is a resolution accepting our Victim of Crime Advocacy Act grant. And this grant pays for 80% of our VOKA. We've had great luck with it the last several years. Our requirement is that we pay either in cash or in-kind match up to 20% of the total cost, which we equate to about $15,700.
Need a motion.
Yes, sir.
A second.
And seconded. Thank you, Paul. If there are no questions, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. That carries. That completes the agenda that we had printed, and we're down to council comments. Tammy, can I start with you?
No, you don't have anything. Thank you. Yes, thank you.
Mark? Karen?
A couple of things. One, thank you for moving the vote on Kewridge. Got response back on that. They were happy to get the vote off the street.
You know, all I took was contacting the owner of the boat, and he was willing to do it.
Yeah, they had gone through coenforcement, and it had been done, so it's been sitting there most of the summer, so.
Police did it almost immediately after you.
Yeah, so, they thanked, thanked me, and I told them I would thank you for, for taking that action and getting it done. And then, met with, to give the council an update on the Religious Freedom Amendment to the Human Rights Ordinance, I met with Devin, and the mayor said in on it, and so I invited Polly to sit in on it as well, to talk about the amendments that I had given to Devin, and Devin had questioned the amendments and was uncomfortable doing them, so I am going to do some more homework. The mayor gave me some options I could do, was force you all to go on and vote on them, I'll force you all to even vote on and telling, telling our city attorney to go on and do it, but I'm not putting you all in that situation. I'm going to do my homework and come back. All right? And then, the fourth thing is an amendment to our Ethics Ordinance. I would like to see this. Now, I've done a little more homework on this, and I think I can do this based on the KRS 11A.080, Section 2, I think is the area, but it would amend the, it's kind of like what the state does for the ethics. It amend the ethics so that the mere filing of the complaint prior to the time that you take the review is not subject to open records. But, once, not to violate sunshine laws, but once there's determination that there is a hearing is needed, then the complaint, the name of the filer, the name of the person it's against, and who the complaint has been filed on can be released. So, once it's passed the muster that there is, there is a problem here, then everything is subject to open records at that point in time. Who did the filing, so you don't file it in secret. If you're going to file something on somebody, you should put your name to it, and then the person it's filed against, and the public knows, and is, is up and off, so.
So, you mean after the preliminary inquiry step is what?
Yes, because there's no point.
And if they determine to have a hearing.
That's right. There's no point that there is no ethics complaint whatsoever, that there's nothing here, there's no point in continuing on with it, and, and bringing it all to the surface and then into windows that there's something going on, or something hasn't gone on, or whatever, and it just confuses the public. But, if something has been filed, then yes, it should be subject to open records requests. And I really think that's the way the state, the state does it. So, let me pass my little famous index card down to you, and I won't take it back this time.
I have a, I have a question about that.
Yeah, go ahead.
Does the state allow for anonymous complaints, ethics complaints?
I don't, I, I don't think they do, actually.
I, I just wondered about like whistleblower type things.
I mean, it is, it is subject to at what stage, at what stage the complaint is, so I would have to pull up, it is KRS Chapter 11A, but I would have to.
I'll be curious about that.
Because filing an ethics complaint in a whistleblower is really considered, really two different things.
They're two very different things.
So, on a whistleblower, a whistleblower would be, you know, if the mayor did something wrong, and it was his employee filing a whistleblower and saying that he was doing something wrong, that's not an ethics complaint. That's a little different than that. So, so the ethics complaint can be on any of us, and so it's not really a whistleblower.
Well, unless they, the person thought that someone was doing something wrong and feared retaliation or something, if they filed it.
But on that.
I would just like to know if it, if that's how the state handles it.
Yeah, I don't think it still falls under that. I don't think it still falls under that, but I hand that off and, and let Devin take a look at it this time, and, and I brought it to you all, just so you know what thinking I need to do, because I think our, our ethics needs a little updating anyway.
Well, I think the hard thing is anybody can file an ethics complaint, say whatever about anyone, and then afterwards, what happened in this situation tipped off the paper, and for both myself and Mr. Thompson, we're both business owners. So, even though we were cleared, it was dismissed, there's still a paper trail of when anybody looks us up, and to, to tarnish our business and reputations and our families, and that, that should not happen, especially if it's dismissed. I mean, if you're dismissed and cleared, why open it up, but that was to.
It also had a, something that came up tonight from one of the speakers that confused me, was that there isn't any rule that, that the people that filed the ethics complaint didn't even understand what actually made a legitimate complaint. So, I think Millie said that, that, that she said, by the way, we didn't even know what the guidelines were for a complaint, that they're not available, and, and I don't understand.
But our Ethics Ordinance is, is online, and if anybody requests it, I'd be glad to.
Okay, okay. So, maybe she, maybe I misunderstood what she said.
And I, I think she maybe was talking about the procedure that the Ethics Board takes, but that's a, I mean, that's with any board, those, those are internal procedures, but the, the Ethics Ordinance does lay out what constitutes a violation, and it's primarily dealing with financial issues.
Okay.
That's what, that's what the ordinance is geared towards, but, but like I said, anybody can access it online, in the clerk's office, or, or by contact.
And it has a little bit on the, if I remember correctly, I may not, but it has a little bit laid out of the procedures in it as well.
Yeah, hold on. It does, yeah.
And it talks about the preliminary inquiry phase, and, and past that phase, what happens, whether it's dismissed, or whether there's a, there's a hearing. I mean, the, the board chair is kind of tasked with how to communicate that to the complainants and the, and the alleged violator, which that's, that's, you know, that's their determination, but as far as what constitutes a violation and what the phases are of the, the inquiry, it, it's laid out in the ordinance.
Did you hear her say that tonight?
I did.
Did you, did I misunderstand how she meant that then?
I don't think so. I think, I think she just wanted more information on how the determination was made, but it's made based on whether there are facts alleged that could lead to a violation of the ordinance, and it's all based on what's contained in the complaint. So, to pass that preliminary inquiry phase, you know, if, if it reached a hearing, yeah, they, they would offer the opportunity for, for complainants to appear. That's my interpretation, the ordinance. I don't advise the Ethics Council, and Tracy serves as their.
Secretary.
Secretary. So, it, you know, we had to find that correct balance, because we're not really advising them, they're, you know, as a board, they're able to hire counsel if they want, if they have an issue interpreting, but, you know, we can provide them with, with the ordinance, and that's pretty much it, so.
Is it the first time this, this particular Ethics Board had met this, this group of folks?
We've made every year to go over your financial interest statements.
Oh, I mean for a complaint, then, I should say.
For a complaint. Yes, this group of folks, yes.
Okay. Okay. It seemed like, from what I understood, that they were, had struggled a little bit with, with how to, to proceed with it, but.
We're happy to review that, the ordinance she proposed, and I think in looking at our ordinance, we identified a few other things that could probably be fixed. When we did our sort of omnibus revision, the Ethics Commission decided to just leave procedure completely alone out of the revision, and I think there are some things that he clarified. But to go back to your point, there's really nothing that we can do to override the open records law, which is sort of a.
A hack and a stake.
Blanket, but they're, but they're the state.
Well, that didn't matter, they're still government. They may do it, we could do it.
Well, they said.
But I don't want to do that.
Well, they set the rules for the executive branch Ethics Code, and they say, here's what's subject and what isn't. All local governments, however, are bound by the Open Records Act, and there's nothing in the Open Records Act that speaks directly to Ethics Ordinance. What you have is a jillion attorneys general's opinions that all say generally the same thing, and what they say is that a complaint is always, in a quasi judicial or administrative case such as Ethics Board, it always remains confidential until there's been a final decision.
Okay.
And then anything relied upon in the final decision automatically becomes open. Then, after that, it's one of the subjective things, it's up to the local government to say, is revealing any particular piece of information? It's up to the local government to say, is revealing any particular piece of information a breach of someone's personal confidential information? And if you redact any of that stuff, you have to have individual case-by-case justification for why you would do so. But the general rule is, after a decision has been reached, and a decision includes no decision at all, do nothing, then everything becomes subject to open records, and all of it is sunshine essentially. There's no, other than, you know, phone numbers or social security numbers, things like that that we all know are personal information, but names, they're all, the sort of default rule is everything is open.
Right, and you made a good point that state law treats the executive ethics issues differently. And I know that feels weird, but they do. I'm glad to look into it completely and look at your notes. Andrew's point about the procedure issue, though, we, when we, when City Hall received the complaints and funneled them to the Ethics Board, I was reviewing Ethics Ordinance, and Andrew and I both agreed that even though it was just revised two years ago, we have a couple of things to look at, so.
Yeah. So, it needs to be cleared up, but while.
It just doesn't read super smooth.
While clearing it up, then see about adding some of that into it. See what, see what we can, what we can't. It's not, it's not to violate the sunshine law because I'm very much open transparency when it comes to government. Everything needs to be laid out on the table. But the problem is, if somebody's accused of something and there's nothing founded to that whatsoever, even though the Ethics Board may rule on it, then you've always got that cloud of, oh, well, they were turned into the Ethics Board in the first place. So, that's what you want to take somebody out of that cloud if.
For harassment purposes.
If that's not, if there was no justification in it whatsoever, then you want to take them out from under that cloud. So, but anyway.
You could say, you know, that after a final decision or it's reached, the complainants will not remain anonymous and they need some very circumstances. I don't think that would be a violation.
Yeah, we could say out use, probably.
Yeah, but to say that it's not subject, to say that it goes away or that it just never existed, we couldn't do that. But we could open it completely up to sunshine.
Well, I think the whole thing is, if that's what we have to do, the whole thing is to be opened up because you can look at some people that may accuse somebody. They accuse somebody of an ethics complaint, and then you can say, oh, well, they had a bad business dealing, you know, five years ago. So, they're just trying to get back at them for that and making up something. So, then, at least, it would be a more, a little more even playing field that everybody could say, oh, I remember when they had business dealings that they were, you know, that kind of stuff. That's why they filed it. Those kind of things. So, anyway, I think it needs to be cleaner and put as much transparency, put the transparency in it, but not to get some people's names out there as a negative and some people.
Well, and the hard thing too is stuff like that can be politically motivated. You know, we can have anybody in the community accuse any of us of doing anything for political, you know, we have elections coming up next year, so.
Absolutely.
Yeah, so, yeah. Anyhow, well, thank you. Thanks for clarifying that, so.
Anything else, Karen? Thank you. Bonnie?
I'm good, thanks.
You're good. David?
Yes, sir.
Marvin?
Yes, sir.
Quick question. I was walking Royal Spring Park, one of my favorite parks in town, and I noticed some of the bricks had fallen on the fence, so those need to be picked back up. I cleaned it up quite a lot. There were a lot of cans there. And someone had asked me, because people do a lot of pictures by the cabin, you know, on the far, the one that's falling in. And people have been asking me what's going on with that. What should I tell them? You know, is it going to be just kind of, just wait until it falls in? Or is the Historic Society working on it?
Historic Society took it on a couple of years ago and got nowhere. We're kind of basically, we don't have the money to fix the cabin right now.
Yeah, I know, because it's got the dry rock going on and. Needs help.
I'm not sure it may be passed, but we don't have the money to fix it today. Well, the one that's in the worst shape is historic.
That was Don Hawkins, baby.
I remember you saying that. You always said that, yeah.
The one, the one that is.
The one closest to local feet is what I'm talking about, the one, you know.
Oh, that's the least historically significant.
Okay, yeah.
It came from another county.
The one, the other one's okay, I think. The other one's.
The other one actually came from a site that's about 100 feet away. So, it wasn't built exactly on that spot, but it was from the immediate vicinity. And it is considered historically significant.
So, many people do pictures against it and everything. And there's a lot of weddings that happen in the park now. So, it's kind of cool, so. That's all I have.
But it's on our list.
Yeah.
Okay, if there's nothing else to come forward, the council? Stand it up.